To order the June 22, 2021 City Council Work Study Session to Order. City Clerk Ben Lane, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor David Ortega?
Present.
Vice Mayor Betty Janik?
Present.
Councilmembers Tammy Caputi?
Here.
Tom Durham?
Here.
Kathy Littlefield?
Here.
Linda Milhavin?
Here.
And Solange Whitehead?
Here.
City Manager Jim Thompson?
Here.
City Attorney Sherry Scott?
Here.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews?
Here.
City Auditor Sharon Walker?
Here.
And the city clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our work study provides for a less formal setting for the mayor and council to discuss specific topics with each other and city staff and provide city staff with the opportunity to receive direction from the council. We will not be voting on anything, but we will be discussing and listening to public comment with regard to the subject, which is the Old Town Character Area Plan. We will begin the work study by receiving public comment. Public comment is limited to up to five people who may speak regarding the topic, and we have two by telephone and we have two in person. So I will ask staff to bring on the telephone participant them first. Bastian Androuet?
And Mr. Androuet, you should be able to press star six on your telephone and begin your public comment. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Ortega and members of City Council. My name is Bastian Androuet. Today I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Arizona Multi-Housing Association regarding the Old Town Character Area Plan. The AMA, which by way of background happens to represent owners, operators, and developers of over 300,000 rental housing units across the state of Arizona, cautions the council against reverting the city back to 1980-style zoning regulations. Such action, including reducing density and height allowances for new housing developments and reversing the more recent reforms enacted in 2010 and 2018 to the city zoning code, will further exacerbate Arizona's housing shortages. This comes at a time when, just in May, the Arizona Legislature took the first steps in addressing local zoning matters and passed a new law related to the cost of new zoning ordinances. Please feel free to reference Senate Bill 1409, zoning ordinances, property rights, and costs. This new law was passed in response to zoning regulations that have added to the cost of housing construction over the years and have contributed to the state's more recent housing affordability issues. The new law reads as follows: Before adopting any zoning ordinance or zoning ordinance tax amendment of general applicability, legislative body of a municipality shall consider the probable impact of the proposed zoning ordinance or tax amendments on the cost to construct housing for sale or rent. If anything, Senate Bill 1409 is a signal to local decision makers that the state is now actively examining barriers to housing development and is prepared to take remedial action. At the federal level, three administrations have also inserted themselves into the local zoning conversation. In his administration's 2016 Housing Development Toolkit, President Obama noted that over the past three decades, local barriers to housing development have intensified, particularly in the high-growth metropolitan areas increasingly dealing with the national economy. The accumulation of such barriers, including zoning, other land use regulations, and lengthy development approval processes, has reduced the ability of many housing markets in response to growing demand. Similarly, President Trump stated in his 2019 Executive Order 13878, "These regulatory barriers increase the costs associated with development and, as a result, drive down the supply of affordable housing. They are the leading factor in the growth of housing prices across metropolitan areas in the United States. Many of the markets with the most severe shortages in affordable housing attempt at the most restrictive state and local regulatory barriers to development." Finally, President Biden passed his administration with identifying incentives for municipalities to remove barriers to housing development, such as exclusionary zoning laws. In his June 17, 2021 article, the president and his staff note that exclusionary zoning laws enact barriers to entry that constrain housing supply, which all else equal, translate into an equilibrium with more expensive housing and poorer homes being built. Again, much like the state legislature's recent actions, these recent observations by very distinct presidential administrations indicates that local policymakers should be considering ways to reduce barriers to housing construction rather than create new ones. It is for these reasons that we caution the city against moving forward with changes to the Old Town Character Area Plan. And should you have any questions, please, Matt, as a page, reach out at any time. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Next speaker, Michael Norton, again telephonically.
And Mr. Norton, you should now be able to press star six on your device and begin your public comment. Thank you. Mr. Norton, from our end of the software, you are unmuted, but you will need to press star six. We can't hear you yet. If you can press star six on your device, you should be unmuted at that point to begin your public comment. Mayor Ortega, if you'd like, we can put Mr. Norton's comment on hold, and while other commentators go in person, I can attempt to call him directly to see if we can figure out this issue.
Very good. Thank you. Our next person in-person speaker will be French Thompson, and then Bob Penjeman.
Can we get something on the... Wow, look at that. I always come up with something good. At least I can hear what I'm saying, not on the phone. I sure hope I didn't sound that bad last time when I called in. My name is French Thompson. I'm a business owner of downtown Scottsdale. You know, I usually talk to you very extemporarily, but today, I really have a few things I want to say. With this downtown overlay, who is it that wants all this added height and density in downtown? I mean, really, who is it that wants that? Is it the citizens? If the citizens really want that, you should put it to a vote. You should put it in an election and say, hey, citizens of Scottsdale, do you want this in the downtown? Or is this somebody else that's coming in and saying, well, we want it, but we don't want anybody else to know that we're going to be doing it? So, in the previous character map, it had pink and blue and these other things. Well, all the heights were all hidden in the bottom in little tiny fine print, which attorneys like to do. They put things in fine print because they know nobody's going to read it. I don't think the city of Scottsdale needs 70, 90, 120, 150-foot buildings in the downtown. I see buildings all over the whole entire valley that are much lower than that. They're building them, and people are living there. I don't think that the citizens of Scottsdale want that. The referendum this last fall indicated that they didn't want the South Bridge. That was a density/height question. I think this past election is the same thing, that they voted in people that were saying that they didn't want to see height and density in the downtown either. So the South Bridge people, the company, bless their hearts, they're developers, they want to build. I understand that. But back in the, I don't know, two decades ago, there was another one, and it actually went to a public vote about that project, and the citizens said no. This last time, there was a referendum. The developer decided to pull it before it went to a public vote. Wise move on their part. This character plan is going to be inside the general plan. It's being referenced in the general plan. I really would like to see the general plan pass. We need one here in the city of Scottsdale. I'm very afraid, though, that when the citizens find out that those heights are still in that, it's going to have an adverse impact on the people that are voting for the general plan. So I would really like to see the council take back the great downtown developer giveaway and take it back to the heights that are more reasonable for the area that is there. We don't need those building heights. We can still build quality development and apartments and businesses down there without it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next in person, Bob Pejman.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega, council members. My name is Bob Pejman. Address is on the record. So with or without a downtown plan or an Old Town Character Plan, there is existing zoning right now for every piece of land, every parcel. And if a developer submits an aggressive plan that can get four-plus council votes, that land can be upzoned for taller buildings. That's how the waterfront got approved. Despite lower zoning, four-plus council members apparently agreed it was a good project, and they approved it. But it wasn't approved because there was a character plan or anything like that that made it happen. My point is that four-plus votes can approve or upzone anything. Now, I'd read the 2018 Downtown Character Plan, and when it was passed, the underlying zoning did not change. It remained as it was. But the character plan added four or designated four areas with specific heights, but all of that is aspirational or suggested. It's not zoning. And by the way, if you look on page 15, those heights are written in a... I don't think there's possible smaller font that they could have put in. Maybe there is, but I don't think it gets printed. And so it's almost like they were putting that small font so that nobody would read it or that it would not make it major. Also, the outreach that was performed back then, in my opinion, was very superficial. There was very little attention given to the height. And in the meeting where that plan was passed, and I was there, the question was asked, what's the difference here? And the answer was, there's no difference. It'll just make it more... It will add more agility. I think that's what Randy Grant said, that it would just add more agility. And that's fine, but it still doesn't change the zoning. So the question is, what's all the fuss about this character plan? And my answer is this: I believe that, number one, it gives the impression that the taller heights are zoning when they're not. It also gives cover to council to approve the taller heights despite the lower underlying zoning, because they can claim later to the voters that the character plan made them powerless to change the zoning. But it's not zoning. Also, in reference to the Prop 207, there is no devaluation of a property since it can still be upzoned if there are four votes. So I go back to what French said. The general plan references the character plan. And as we know, height and density have not been popular items, evidenced by the referendum and also evidenced by the three people on the council right now that ran on that issue. So I hope that the general plan passes, but I hope that it doesn't reference the character plan with the higher heights, which, in my opinion, should be removed since it will make no zoning difference. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now go remote again, relying on staff, see if Mr. Norton is coming through.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega. And Mr. Norton, you should be able to press star six on your device, and it looks like we actually just had him drop off of the call. So unfortunately, that public comment will not be available. Thank you.
Okay. Well, at this point, I would ask for the staff presentation, and I'm hopeful that we can just get through the presentation without stopping and then come back with any questions we may have at that point. No comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Adam Yaron. I'm a principal planner with Long Range Planning. I'll be one of two presenters this evening discussing the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan. This is a follow-up request to City Council request for this work-study session item made on May 4 to review and discuss the Old Town Character Area Plan concerning height, density, land uses, buffering, traffic, and infrastructure. Our current Character Area Plan for this area of the community is a 2018 Old Town Character Area Plan, which establishes vision and values for this part of the community. It also shapes the physical form of development within the community, and it consists of five chapters that are presented on screen. Now, although that's our existing Character Area Plan, this part of the community has had a longstanding association with having a Character Area Plan, which started in 1984 with the Downtown Plan. The purpose of that plan was to attract specific land uses specific to office, residential, and resort uses. It also created the couplet for increased traffic in the locations that are shown in yellow on screen, which anticipated that increase in traffic, and also expected high-quality design having a pedestrian focus. In terms of pattern of development types first established with this plan, if you see on screen that those locations shown as green is the Type 1 low-scale development, was to be surrounded by the Type 2 medium-to-high-scale development, shown in blue. Associated with the establishment of that Downtown Plan was the Downtown D-Zoning District first established in 1986, which established public improvements and bonuses to attract those specified land uses desired by the community at the time. Those bonuses were expressed through increased floor area ratio, increased building height, as well as the PBD or planned block development, which encouraged land assembly to encourage Following that 1984 plan, in 2009, the plan was updated to reflect a change in the community's vision and values, as well as demographics, and also incorporated an updated, rather, the implementation items of that original 1984 plan with new items that were desired by the community at the time. In terms of pattern of development, it continued the Type 1 and Type 2 development types that were part of that 1984 plan to guide development, but also expanded Type 2 in certain areas of the community. And so you'll see on screen, those portions that are shown with this gray crosshatching were previously shown as Type 1 and converted to Type 2 with the 2009 Downtown Plan update. The Downtown D-Zoning District was also updated in 2012 with the ability to ask for 150-foot building heights in specific areas of the community. Those areas included the Downtown Regional Area, which is located north of the Arizona Canal, shown here at the center portion of the screen, as well as the medical campus associated with the Honor Health Campus, as we know it today. That ability to ask for 150 feet was a precursor to the Type 3 development type that I'll show on our next slide. With respect to the next significant update to the Downtown Plan was the 2018 Old Town Character Area Plan. The purpose of that plan, as we have it today, as our existing plan, was to align with the tourism and branding marketing initiatives, which repurposed the name of downtown from downtown to old town, as well as to implement Downtown 2.0 Tourism Study, which again encouraged having the Old Town area as an economic engine for the community that had a tourism focus. In terms of pattern of development expressed within that 2018 plan, it again continued the Type 1 and Type 2 development types, shown in green and blue. It also introduced the Type 2.5 development type to support revitalization of a specific location in the community. It also acknowledged the medical and regional areas as Type 3. So as you recall, those areas previously shown as purple, I'm sorry, rather, as blue north of the Arizona Canal and within the areas of the Honor Health Campus were formalized into a Type 3 development typology. And it also expanded Type 3 near-public open spaces that were identified as the Downtown 2.0 study as being key amenities for the community. So in those expansions of the Type 3, it included areas north of Fifth Avenue and east of the Drinkwater Curve, as well as that portion west of Scottsdale Road, north of the Goldwater Curve as part of the Museum Square, as we know it today. In terms of companion zoning updates that happened at that time, it included updates to the D, DO, and PBD districts, which incorporated the IGCC or International Green Construction Code as a base requirement in the PBD application. It also consolidated bonus development standards in height, FAR, and density, and included minor updates to the cultural improvement program. It also allowed the ability to ask for 150 feet in the Type 3 PBD in those expanded areas. Again, this was an ability for developers to ask for 150 feet, and we'll cover that more in detail on the next series of slides. Here's just a quick slide that shows the evolution of the development types map expressed through the decades and updates that the community revisited the plan. So again, you'll see here in the 2009 as compared to the 1984 original plan, the change in the Type 2 or expansion of Type 2 in this location north of Fifth Avenue and east of historic Old Town, and then the formalization of not only the 2.5, but also the Type 3 development types, as shown on screen. Now, to dovetail with the Old Town Character Area Plan is the Old Town Scottsdale Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines, which purposes to provide direction on character and design of development. It has a number of objectives to promote, I'm sorry, protect unique character of the downtown core, promote continuity of character in Old Town districts, and strengthen pedestrian character, to just name a few of those objectives. In terms of those design guidelines, there's a series of illustrations within those guidelines that are intended to communicate how development types are supposed to be realized within this part of the community. This graphic on screen presents buffering adjacent to neighborhoods at the downtown boundary. So if you were to orient yourself to the right-side portion of the screen, you'll see a single-family home that's intended to be shown as a property that is not within the downtown boundary or Old Town Character Area Plan, as compared to the properties that are adjacent to it at the left-side portions of the screen, which show how developments intended to both respond to both setback and stepbacks adjacent to areas not within the downtown boundary. So to give some example to the maximum of the Type 3 development type, in order to achieve a maximum of 150 feet, the setbacks would have to be provided at a minimum distance of 350 feet away from the Old Town boundary edge. This illustration presents transitions between development types through building design. And so this is an example of how those transitions are to occur within the Old Town boundary so as to provide transitions from one development type to another. So in the graphic that's provided, it's not intended to show any specific one location in the community, other than to just show setbacks and stepbacks that are supposed to be sensitive to the differences in development types. This graphic presents an illustration that encourages reducing apparent building size and mass for all development types, which provides a series of methods to visually reduce building size and mass, to include but are not limited to setbacks, stepbacks, architectural features, and horizontal subdivision, so as to encourage that pedestrian environment that this plan and these guidelines encourage. So whether you're Type 1 or Type 2, Type 2.5 or 3 development types, each development is expected to provide architecturally a base, middle, and top with an expanded area for pedestrian amenities. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Brad Carr with current planning to discuss zoning, and I'll see you back shortly.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Ortega, members of the council. It's good to see you all in person. Again, Brad Carr with the city's planning department. As Adam noted, we have a policy document in place for the city's vision and guidance on the Old Town area of our city. That companion document for the Old Town Design Guidelines work in tandem to create that vision from a character standpoint for the community. The city's main regulatory document to implement that vision is the city's zoning ordinance. And within the city's zoning ordinance, there are three zoning districts that implement that within our Old Town area. Those are shown on the screen here. The Downtown District, which is shown in the lighter color, the orange or yellowish color there, that is the main district that the city utilizes to have properties zoned within the downtown area to utilize the D District for land use regulations and work with our urban design and architectural guidelines. The downtown overlay, which is shown in gray, is an overlay that was applied over the entire district, and those properties are shown here in gray because they have not made the transition from their underlying zoning district, which would be a C1 or C2, C3 zoning district that would have been applied early on in the history of the city, 50s, 60s, 70s time span. And finally, the city has a plan block development overlay district, which is the hatch pattern that works in tandem with the downtown district, and that promotes flexibility within properties that are over a certain size, in this case, 20,000 square feet, in order to qualify to utilize that district. That land use, again, promotes the use of more public amenities in exchange for flexibility and setbacks and stepbacks for those properties. And so when we talk about height, those height within the downtown district is defined mostly by whether or not you're within a D District or within the downtown overlay. The downtown overlay is utilizing the underlying districts for maximum height allowance. And so with regards to those properties that are within that area, C1, C2, C3, the underlying zoning district would allow a maximum height of 36 feet. There are no bonuses available with the downtown overlay, so those are capped in those areas in gray at a maximum height of 36 feet. Now, moving up to the Type 1 within our downtown district, the D District, you have a maximum height of 40 feet in the historic Old Town area, which is shown in yellow and black there, and then 48 feet in all those areas in green outside of that area. And then moving up from there, again, you have Type 2, Type 2.5, that share the 66-feet base maximum height, and the Type 3 in our more intensive areas at 84 base maximum height. The Type 2, Type 2.5, and Type 3 are those districts that qualify for a bonus if you have the PBD overlay applied on there as well. And so again, when we talk about bonus provisions in the Old Town, there's just that plan block development that's able to utilize it. And so again, you need to have a minimum of 20,000 square feet to qualify for that plan block development, and there's a graduated scale depending on the area you have accumulated for a project site, as far as what height you can ultimately achieve. And that's shown in the lower portion there of the screen with the three character area types, 2.5 and 3. And so again, I'd want to just note that if you have just straight D zoning, you don't have any PBD overlay, there is no bonus height allowed, similar with downtown overlay. But if you do have a site that has mass over 20,000 square feet, you could qualify for the ability to ask council for additional bonus height. And to qualify for PBD, you have to provide several public benefits, including public art, the 1% contribution kicks in when you go to the plan block development, as well as the requirement to construct to the International Green Construction Code or IGCC. And then, as you can see, the Type 3 is that area, the more intensive area of our Old Town, which would have qualified for 150 feet if you have a site that's over 200,000 square feet in size. And so this graphic here is intended to show you those properties at this point in time that we have found that under collective ownership would qualify for that 200,000 square feet or more. And as you can see, there's not many of those properties, and a couple of those have most recently been to the council for approvals, showing the number one, the Museum Square project, and number two, the Collection project. But again, there's those areas of Fashion Square in the dark purple at the upper part of the screen, as well as that pink portion in the lower part of the screen at the Honor Health site that are existing, and then that area in the middle of the site, which is the site of the Unkers property, and then several others that are scattered throughout that qualify. But collectively, there's not many properties at this point that have the amount of space to even qualify for that 150 feet ask. And again, that's not to say that properties couldn't accumulate and do that, but the land ownership in the downtown, especially for small parcels, is very fractional right now. So if you look at the bonus standard requirements within the PBD, the council has a lot of discretion to determine where they utilize those funds that are proposed as part of a public improvement or public benefits to utilize bonus height or bonus density or bonus gross floor area. And those range on the screen, as you can see here, from major infrastructure improvements to public open spaces to pedestrian amenities. Most often recently, projects have proposed cultural improvement program contributions that are above and beyond the typical 1% that we would require for a PBD project. But again, we want to emphasize council has full discretion to decide how those funds are used in any project that proposes those public benefits. Right now, those rates are $20.21, are about $13 per extra square foot, and a little over $13,000 per additional foot in height and additional unit that a project proposes. And we also wanted to emphasize the city staff's review for any proposal in the downtown when it comes to Old Town infrastructure. Any proposal that comes in, whether it be... Any proposal that comes in, whether it be within the city's Old Town or throughout the entire city's jurisdiction, receives a pretty scrutiny, receives scrutiny under the city's requirements for impact analysis in our systems, and that includes transportation, water and sewer and stormwater systems. City engineers will analyze proposals from the applicant based on infrastructure plans that are prepared and reports that are prepared by these applicants, and they're going to be doing that through a traffic impact, modal assessment, or TIMA, basic design report on a water sewer side, or even stormwater studies on the stormwater side. And if any impacts are identified during that review process, those are required to be addressed as conditions of an approval of zoning. That could include upsizing lines in the area, water sewer lines or stormwater lines, or adding additional stormwater lines, or upgrading other infrastructure like roadways to add additional lanes or right turn to D cell lanes or acceleration lanes. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Adam, who's going to talk about some modeling that the long-range folks have done for you.
Thank you, Brad. Mayor, members of council, the next series of slides are going to respond to city council's request to model portions of Old Town, and the methodology that has been applied is to represent these models within a Google Earth format to show development in context. These models depict buildings that have yet to be displayed within Google Earth. The entitled properties that have yet to be built are shown as either white, as being DRB approved, or gray being zoning approved. These buildings were all modeled per zoning standards and their case approvals. Notably, these models are elevated due to distortion at the ground level in the format in which Google Earth presents. And so with respect to, not only that disclaimer, it's really to the disclaimer of all the great developments we see in Scottsdale, our models certainly are missing details in terms of quality building materials, building articulation and shading. And so what's presented on the top side of the screen is an example of what's been provided at DRB at its approval with respect to the Honor Health Neuroscience Building that's been built, and largely represents what was submitted at the DRB approval as compared to what's been modeled on the lower portion of the screen, which is really intended to respond to height and building massing within the construction envelope of that site. So to start, we can look at the northwest corner of Osborne and Drinkwater Boulevard to a location that has long had height associated with it. That is the Honor Health Tower, standing at 90 feet in height. This has been an asset to the community since the mid 70s, and although folks largely don't associate this building with height, it is one of the larger buildings within our Old Town area. As presented on the left side portion of the screen, you'll see the Honor Health Neuroscience Building that we just touched on, standing at 83 feet in height. Here's another example of where height has existed within the Old Town area. Since 1972, the AmTrust Building has stood at 150 feet in height, when compared to more contemporary development of the Optimus in Oran Village that sits at the southeast corner of Camelback and 68th Street at 129 feet in height. Further in the perspective here is the Scottsdale Waterfront at 150 feet in height. Here's an example of how development responds to transitions of both setback and step back to areas that are not within the Old Town Character Area. If you orient yourself to the right side portion of the screen, you'll see a single-family community that does not have an underlying color tone, so as to represent that part of the, that part of the community is not within the Old Town boundary. And you'll see a series of very purposeful and significant setbacks and step backs that respond to both massing and height that moves away from the single-family neighborhood that sits just south of it. So you see a step back increase, it's from 35 feet to 65 feet at the center portion of the site, finally to 129 feet at the north portion of the site adjacent to Camelback Here's another example of where height has been associated within the Old Town area. That is at the Fashion Square Office Building, which was built in the late 80s, standing at 95 feet in height, juxtaposed to the Scottsdale Waterfront, again, at 150 feet in height. Further in view is the Collection at 150 feet in height as a type three development, and then the Edition at 90 feet in height as a type two development. Further on the left side portion of the screen is the Blue Sky Development, which has approvals at 133 feet in height. Closer in view here, on this screen, you see again the Collection as a type three development at 150 feet in height, and then the Edition on the north side of Camelback Road is a type two development, shown as a transition in height of 90 feet, working down to the Waterview Development, which has approvals at 50 feet in height, showing its adjacency and consideration in both setback and step back to an area not within the Old Town boundary and adjacent to a single-family neighborhood. Here's, again, just a representation of what was approved for the Edition Hotel, shown on screen before you. This was a DRB approval. And here's a graphic depiction used for the zoning approval, this was not DRB approval, for the Collection at City Center, a site located at the southeast corner of Camelback and Scottsdale Roads. With respect to this slide now, if we're orienting, looking westerly, you see the DC Hotel closest in view, standing at 70 feet, 75 feet rather, in height, as a type two development type. You'll see both a meaningful step back and setback plane associated to, again, an area not within the Old Town boundary. And then further in view, you see a series of buildings associated with the Scottsdale Collection. This bottom right portion of the map responds to these building heights. So you see the building furthest in view at 150 feet, 150 feet in height at the intersection of Scottsdale and Camelback Road, shown here, the Maya shown at the intersection of Indian Plaza and Buckboard Trail, and then this portion of the collection also is a type three development, shown as 90 feet in height. Here's an example of what was submitted at the DRB approval for the DC Hotel, a site that's largely built today. The Maya Hotel, a DRB approval submitted rendering. Now, as we move north to south, looking southerly, you see, this is a good example of where we have type three development shown largely in what's presented on screen. You see, what's notable here is that not all type three development is associated with the 150 feet of development height. You see closest in view here, Camelview Optima developed at 65 feet in height, and then Blue Sky, as previously noted, at 133 feet in height, and then Gramercy, which is largely built today, at 75 feet in height. As we move further south, along Scottsdale Road, coming to the Camelback intersection, you see, again, coming into view, the Collection and Marquee sites approved at 150 feet in height, juxtaposed to the Scottsdale Waterfront at 150 feet in height, and Fashion Square Office Building at 95 feet in height. Coming closer into view, what I want to touch on on this screen is that the Character Area Plan, as well as design guidelines, really encourage, again, providing an environment that is pedestrian-focused and provides amenities that respond to that expected demand in both pedestrian and building massing. And so you see here at the intersection of Camelback and Scottsdale Roads, on the south side modeled before you is the Scottsdale Collection with its continuation of pedestrian connection that carries through and along the Arizona Canal, and the open space that's been provided along the Scottsdale Waterfront frontage at its location. Here's the Marquee DRB approval as presented on screen. Now, as you go to our southern edge of the Old Town area here, you'll, we'll start at a type two development type, which brings into view the Griffin and Carter apartment complexes, which are built at 56 and 60 feet in height respectively. Further in view here, again, you see the Honor Health Neuroscience Building at 83 feet in height, and then further into view, 150 feet height of Museum Square. What's presented here on screen is, again, is to show that the Griffin was a development that had to ask for amendments to both setback and step backs, which was encouraged before the guidelines were updated in 2019, so as to provide those pedestrian amenities. So you can see what's been provided here along Scottsdale Road presented on screen, which provides, again, a large expanse of not only building setback, but landscaping and pedestrian amenities of a widened landscape-separated sidewalk. As we move further north, along Scottsdale Road, again, we're coming into view of the right side portion of the screen, the Honor Health Campus, which, again, shows largely this area as being a type three development type, which based on their parcel size and their ownership, could request up to 150 feet in height, but we have yet to see that all typologies that are type three be either built or request 150 feet in height. That's not to say that in areas where shown on screen here, at the intersection of Goldwater, northeast corner of Goldwater and Bishop Lanes, where we have a lot more fragmented ownership, which has yet to develop at 150 feet in height, could, at some point in the future, amass singular ownership that could make such a request. Again, this would be a request for council to consider in the future. What's presented on screen now is a representation of how type one responds to the type three development type. And what you see closest in view here is the Main Street mixed-use developed, I should say, has approvals at the southeast corner of Main Street and Marshall Way at 48 feet in height, adjacent to the built Canopy Hilton of 72 feet in height. That graphic that's presented on the right side portion of the screen is just to remind you of the illustration that we presented earlier on in the presentation, which, again, responds to how the architectural guidelines are expected to promote, again, a meaningful transition between development types. Further into view on the right side portion of the screen is the Museum Square, which has approvals on that building, shown at 75 feet in height, which would be on the east side of Marshall Way. And we'll come into view and talk more about Museum Square now on the next series of slides. What's been presented on screen here is to show an example of how we've modeled previous zoning approvals associated with what's now known as the Museum Square site. This was the previous type two zoning approval for the Loma redevelopment project, which had CCNRs that limited height to 60 feet in height on all portions of the site, and what's been presented is exactly what was approved at the zoning level in terms of building massing, setbacks, and height. And what you'll notice is, the site is really missing a lot of publicly accessible open space, and as well as buildings, meaningful building setbacks and step backs. Here's just an example of what was provided, again, at the council approval, in terms of their elevation. We didn't have a rendering at the time, this is a 20-year-old case, but just wanted to show, again, what that building form looked like. Now, the scenario modeled on this screen shows the maximum type three with base provisions. So this shows that, and we acknowledge on this site, again, if you were to only look at the building setbacks and step backs as required per the zoning code, we still acknowledge the CCNR restrictions of 60 feet associated with both the portion of the site on the north side of Second Street, as well as the south side, but we allowed for the type three development type to be maximized at this portion east of Marshall, east of Marshall Way at 84 feet in height. In more contemporary times, here, you see the site that was pursued by the Museum Square developer, showing, again, what those site locations could have been maximized to with their bonus provisions in place, just to show, again, on this screen, building setbacks and step backs, which would show, again, that 150 feet in height on those two portions of the site west of Marshall Way and the 90 feet in height east of Marshall Way. Now, closest in view and what we're presenting on screen are the, was a type three zoning approval with bonus provisions that were approved by city council. What's presented on the right side corner of the screen is to show the number of properties that had to be amassed in order for the developer to make the request for 150 feet and for council to consider. And through that public discussion and council approval, although it's shown here on this rendering as a parking lot, there were meaningful open spaces that will soon be, eventually be developed in these locations between the buildings. And so you see, again, here, closest in view now, open space adjacent to the Goldwater Boulevard, the preservation of the Stage Brush Theater, community open space that's been provided between the Museum of the West and the Museum Square site here, approved at 150 feet in height, and the Museum Square apartment site approved east of Marshall Way at 75 feet in height. Here's what was provided at the zoning approval for the Museum Square site, again, now looking southwest. So here you see the location of the community open space between, just south of the Museum of the West. Now, as we kind of go into another look at where development transitions, here's an example of the type one development type adjacent to the type two development type, which you see presented on screen here is the Winfield Hotel modeled at 90 feet with its approvals, the Cadre is a type one development at 36 feet in height, and now the Kimsey, which you're all recently familiar with, at 76 feet in height. What's modeled here on screen is the maximum type two with bonus provisions, showing, again, if the developer had maximized their building envelope with the building heights that would have been supported within the plan, the site could have developed in the manner as presented on screen. However, through the public outreach process and through council discussion, the zoning approval that was sought only showed and requested a bonus provision of 10 feet above the base maximum from 66 feet height, in height, to the 76 feet in height as shown on screen. Here's what was provided with the zoning approval in terms of its rendering, again, showing greater articulation, building materials. Again, here's an example of now the Indian School frontage, shown as a type two with bonus provisions modeled at 90 feet in height, again, showing if the developer would have maximized the building envelope for both setbacks and step backs, this is what could have been modeled. However, through, again, the public outreach process, the 76-foot Kimsey was approved as, with a 10-foot bonus provision above the base maximum of 66 feet, while also preserving the Ralph Haver Triangle Building or Kimsey Building shown on screen before you. Here's an example of that rendering provided on screen. And that concludes staff's presentation on this item, allowing for now council to consider certainly discussion, and we'll leave these items on screen so as for you to have that continued dialogue as to what you'd like to do moving forward. If you have any questions, staff's available to answer those questions.
Good. I'd like to open with some comments, and if you could turn to slide seven, I believe. So, thank you for your presentation. We're considering and reconsidering that one right there. At some point, there were two areas, one and two, and then after that point, there ended up being four. Part of the discussion that we're dealing with today is really a two-part discussion. The first part had to do with parking, and the parking element was discussed and passed as an ordinance measure by our council earlier this month. Now, we're looking at the building aspect and where there are incongruencies with the narrative and what has been approved in the 2018 Old Town Character Area Plan. So by reviewing the parking element, there's yet to be a determination as to the impact on the 2018 Old Town Character Area Plan. But it's important to just air that discussion and see where we're going. If you refer to the 2018 plan, one of the problems that is occurring is that the type one is placed against, directly against, a type two zoning, and, sorry, three. Type one and three are placed against each other. If you look at along Fifth Avenue, you'll see a strip there that's about maybe 48 feet wide, and how and why a mapping could have been evolved that way and be approved that way is an obvious flaw in the system. If you look also at other locations, this would be south of Main Street, we have a type one against a type three. So that is a, you see the massing there where Main Street in that area is, again, against a type three, when in fact, the concept is that there should be a transitional to a type two that you started to call out. So several of these mapping problems, where you have a zoning area that is less than 250 feet, such as up near Fifth Avenue, are obvious. 250 feet, such as up near Fifth Avenue, are obvious areas that need to be corrected in my opinion, and that's where we're going to be providing some direction. Now, if you go to slide 10, I believe, so in this case, you're talking about transitions between development types within the Old Town Character Area Plan. Here's an example where a type one, now it's illustrated next to a type two, but there's actually no transition. It's a type one directly against a type three. So that illustration, although it looks good and seems to make sense, is not a valid illustration for the actually type of buildings that are shown in, or potentially shown in the mapping. And in my opinion, is another very serious flaw in how we are, and the public is understanding these spaces. If we were to go back to the number seven again, you'll see again an area which was type two towards Camelback and Scottsdale Road, and that area magically, that triangle area, was then converted to the potential for 150 feet, again, right in the face of type one. And that is a serious flaw in my opinion. Now, where our natural boundaries are is probably the Arizona Canal or the street itself like Camelback Road. If you look towards the quadrant where the collection is and along Camelback, then you have a street transition there that's, I guess, fairly white. But to have a transition again in the Fifth Avenue area where there is no differentiation is, to me, requires some change. Now, the other thing I'll point out is that the Honor Health area around Brown, and that sort of bookends with Fashion Square. So that quadrant, you pointed out, is still has the downtown zoning in Honor Health area. Even though you've shown it as an Old Town Character Area Plan, the previous, and you showed the Fashion Square as the PBD, we understand that. And yet, Honor Health as the underlying downtown district never really hit the 150-foot limit, and they didn't really rezone. They kept their underlying zoning from what you just presented. You showed some hatching, and we could probably confirm that. So as we reexamine this, we've got to look at what is basically at risk. And I'll point out to the commentators who were suggesting that today we are doing a zoning change. We are not doing a zoning change. That seems to be some sort of a fear factor that's being brought up, I think, the multi-housing people. That's not the subject of our discussion tonight, and I think well-informed people would know that, and although that was mentioned as a zoning text amendment. So why don't you go to slide 14? Perhaps, is that 14? I may have, I tried to recall the number. Yeah. For these base heights, the base heights as shown, and then the other one had the comparison with the upsizing of those, potential upsizing of those properties. It could have been the last one. Well, there it says from 90 to 120 to 150 feet. The type 2.5 seemed to be a favored client case there, there's a, where that's the only exception for a particular property owner, which seems to be rather irregular. And once again, it is right in the face of a type one. So you have one abutting a 120-foot height with an area that's restricted to 48. So there are numerous places where I believe a remapping is in order. The other, leaving this slide on, when the original zoning or underlying zoning is at 36 feet, and I believe that case was back to slide 14. So when you look at the original zoning or underlying zoning, and this is the projected or potential base maximum that in type two is projected at 66 feet. It's not, again, this is not a zoning document. This is a, just an outline of colors and textures and whatever else, but it's not really delineating a zoning. But if you look at 36 feet as a basic vested height, and you compare that with the other slide, I guess, was, showed up to 150 feet, that is a 410% increase in height. So the previous one, I think, Kelly, well, there again, that's a good example there. So originally, the type three would have 36 feet, and for some reason, the new coloring system and the Old Town Character Area Plan allowed over 400%, 400% more height in potential height and an ask with bonuses or whatever. So that's the context that we're dealing with here. And the larger question I have is that it appears as though the Old Town Character Area Plan did not address four basic areas. One is the transportation element. That is, they do mention modality, whether you can walk from this sector to that sector or whether you can have a bike or bike here or there, but it doesn't speak to any additional streets when that transition was made from 36 feet potentially to 150 feet. So you have a 400% increase in height and associated density with a 0% increase in roads. Actually, in many cases, the alleys have been eliminated or would be eliminated. In other words, the pickup, delivery of garbage and so forth that would have been interior of a block is one modality for service that gets eliminated or would be eliminated by these methods. So that creates more of a service requirement on the road system that's already overtaxed by up to 400%. The other question had to do with, so that's one of the big ones, transportation. The second one is infrastructure. Although you may have pointed out that very few properties have assembled at this time, this opens the door for full assemblage, which can happen, that's market-driven. But the problem is that we haven't assessed the cumulative addition or stress on the system when you go from 100%, from 36 feet to 150 feet. What is the cumulative effect? And on infrastructure, basically, I believe I counted, it's about a 22-word stipulation that said developer shall pay for whatever it takes to get it done. And each developer singularly just adds to the next guy's deficiency. And I do not see CFD, some sort of a community facilities district, that would even approach the kind of overbuilding potentially that's here. Otherwise, staff has to carry each one at a time. And I believe what happened even with Blue Sky. So Blue Sky got approved 10 years ago, went flat, went bust, whatever. They expected to have a certain water and sewer available which may have been available 15 years ago or 10 years ago, and it's not. So their whole system has to comply with a stipulation, but the question is how frequently and over and over again are our streets going to get torn up hypothetically because of this patchwork and the pressure on infrastructure? I really question why we, whether we have enough water and so forth as well. Now, the third question is sustainability, and that is repeated within the, both the architectural guidelines, and it's listed in the Old Town Character Area Plan, talks about a heat island. So you're, we're creating, this plan, this concept would create tremendous heat islands. The pictures that you were showing from slides 19 through 20, or I think 27, if you wanted to flash through that, those are actual, actually taken at the height of about 100 foot. So if you were a bird flying around, and this one's even higher, if you can see the top of 150-foot building like that one's shown, you have to be above 150 feet with a drone or something flying around. So the massiveness of both Optima and these other projects is somewhat diminished visually. I understand we want to see some scale, but it's actually not to human scale. It's a good attempt, and I appreciate you do that. Now, you can flash through the next one. You'll see, once again, if you're, if you can see a roof of 150-foot building, and that means you're at 160-foot flying around, and you don't really have the perception of the heat island that you're going to get as a pedestrian walking around or feeling what's going on in Old Town. This heat island is really essential to our sustainable downtown. And no matter how you look at it, when you start adding up all this class, now, one example with Optima here, maybe this was Optima three or four, which went up to 150 feet, well, Optima one was 65 feet, as you mentioned. And you mentioned that, well, they didn't go to 150 feet. Well, that was built some years ago when probably it didn't make sense to dig down more to build higher. And it makes even less economic sense today for any developer to be digging down and going to go up. The final, the big four that really has to be looked at here is the tourism component. Now, we're spending $20 million on bed tax money. We're talking about attracting people to Scottsdale, Arizona, world famous internationally, regionally, and so forth, and putting type two, three right in the face of type one character that we have in our Old Town. And where these numbers came from and how they are jeopardizing tourism, which we already heard 25 minutes of that discussion, how number one it is for us, yeah, people are not looking, they're looking for an identity. One of the things that is mentioned in the Old Town Character Area Plan is sense of place. Now, I agree with that, but we put that in the general plan as well, and some people were confused about what sense of place meant. Well, we know what sense of place means, it's Scottsdale, Arizona. So as soon as it gets boarded up or blocked up, we lose, we lose a major element. Now, these four areas, transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, and tourism, of course, lead to economic vitality, but if you just squelch what we've got and to where transportation becomes gridlock, literally gridlock, we don't see an underground tram, we don't see an overhead tram, the potential of gridlock is really, is really huge, and it's dangerous for our city. As we trace the evolution of how this came about, and relating to parking again, there's a need to look at the Old Town Character Area Plan because this council voted six to one that mixed use, now this was citywide, would at least have two uses out of four, but at least the smallest use would be at least 20%. 20% is not reflected in a mixed use project that's 80% or 90, sorry, 90 or 95% like Canal Side is. It's not, it would have to be parked as a mixed use project. So that at least tries to regain a balance of street retail and what the identity is for Scottsdale. The piecemeal approach is, and the position that we're in today is that frankly, even if there were 100%, 100% increase in downtown, so going from 36 to 72 plus a little screen on the top or whatever, that's essentially what the Kimsey ended up being, in that range. It seemed a paper route, it seemed, but it was on a major arterial. But to think that you're going to go 175 feet, now, these are paper projects until somebody actually builds them. And they're getting less and less bankable, and the reality ends up being that we have to be, we're custodians of what? Transportation, sustainability, infrastructure, and tourism. And we got to make sure that it all doesn't get choked off and our economic vitality just gets destroyed in that. That's what the American Council are looking out for. So although we can say that it's not likely that there may be more, or everyone may not build out to it, the potential is just way too extreme, and that's why, you know, we're here today to review some of those details. These are areas that I think we need to give direction to council, and that's the purpose of this work study, so that you would take some of this to heart and also look at the influence of the new parking ordinance on those capacities. I don't believe that anything that, I believe that probably the Old Town Character Plan, even though it's, one can argue it may or may not have much potential of being built out 100%, you've only shown one-tenth, one-tenth of what it could be built out as. If properties were assembled, we've only seen a few blocks here and there, right? Scattered here and there. And potentially, they could be assembled, and they could be approved, and they could fall into this overall pattern, and we would have, you know, a huge monster that would really overcome us. With that, I just want to open up for just general discussion and any other direction that we can give. I thought, again, it's a good try. I appreciate the staff would try to model. I think it is important, and I do know other people will be coming forward with modeling of that entire area showing some build out. And then we'll really be able to judge how that impact could happen. And I think it's, it's very, very much overburdening those four areas. Do we, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Janik, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to direct staff to agendize an initiation to make changes to the Old Town Character Area Plan at the August 24th meeting. Do we have general consensus for that idea?
I'll second the motion.
Sure.
Okay.
What we're going to do as agendized, and there will be a general motion that we, the purpose of our, of our meeting today is to give staff direction for amendments to the Old Town Character Area Plan, and the Old Town, and direction for some amendments for that purpose. If that's ready by that date, which would be our return, I think we have a motion and a second, but we really don't need a motion because we don't do motions in work study. But I hear what you're saying, and I would agree with that, and we could.
Let's just look to make sure that the majority, or hopefully everybody, is okay with that. Do we hear objections?
I think we can, did you have, oh, sorry, Councilmember Millhaven.
Are you suggesting that we provide changes to the Downtown Character Area Plan that would be adopted in August? Is that what you're suggesting?
No. I believe what I'm suggesting, based on my advice from legal, is that at that point in time, we would open up the plan and offer suggestions for changes that could be made. Sherri, am I correct?
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor Janik. So if the council is interested... So if the council is interested in amending the Old Town Character Area Plan, it's a two-step process, similar to that of a zoning ordinance. The council can initiate that amendment. And if the council initiates that amendment, which would require a separate action than what's on your agenda tonight, then the planning staff would take, take that initiation, do open houses, generate some community input and feedback before they then brought any potential amendments forward to the Planning Commission and to the City Council. It would be after that process that the council could potentially vote on amendments to the Downtown Character Area Plan. So the planners could tell you better than I how long that process typically is. But I think it's important for the council to understand it's a two-step process. First, the initiation, that would be a different council action from what you're agendized for tonight. And then, if the council did initiate that amendment, a second council action to actually adopt those amendments. Of course, as you did with your general plan, there could be work studies along the way where the council could talk about what types of amendments are coming forward for the general plan and what the council's input into those amendments would, would be before they finally arrive for actual final action from the council.
Thank you.
Good. So, and, and our discussion, we're also giving some direction or indications of what those topics could be during that process. The, the formal opening of the amendment would have to be agendized approximately nine weeks from today. And that would allow some, some opportunity for this public input investigation by staff, so to speak. So that's, that, it is useful for any direction or discussion of the topic, because we are, we're just openly discussing it at this point. And then you've, you've sort of jumped ahead to think, hey, at the earliest opportunity is when we'd like to get it on the agenda. And a council floor could do that, or just as you agendize anything, if, if we're in good shape to do that in August. So, did you want to, any other, oh, sorry. If I were to just ask to continue with any ideas that would be of importance to you on, on this?
I guess I'll just very briefly mention, I think one of the ideas is that we want to restrict, reduce, or remove bonuses from consideration, although I think that's jumping ahead a couple steps. Otherwise, it's pretty much just edits like what we accomplished with the general plan when we look at the Character Area Plan. So.
So just discussing one at a time, perhaps, and I see Councilmember Millhaven, but can we continue with your, your topic? And I, for instance, the bonus for height of whatever it was, thirteen thousand per foot. Is that per building? Or is that per, because a project may have three buildings, and are they just paying once for that extra height? Or shouldn't they pay for each building? That's a little detail. How is it set up now, for instance?
Certainly, Mayor Ortega, members of the council, currently it's, it's for the entire site. So you would pay for additional foot for an entire site, that, that fee for each additional foot for the entire site.
Wow, that, that's just dirt cheap. I mean, that is, if you had three buildings, like South Bridge or Collection, you only paid, you know, for extra, every extra foot in the whole project of three or four buildings, you only paid thirteen thousand. Just, that's one area touching on bonuses. Did you have something?
Well, I was kind of advised that to go through this list now is a little bit premature, because I'll have, we'll have to go through it again at the August meeting if we get agreement that we want to proceed in the fashion that I just mentioned, so.
Okay. Let me ask Councilmember Millhaven, and then Councilwoman Littlefield.
Well, Mayor, since we heard quite a bit about your thoughts about downtown, I thought I might share some of mine. So my family moved here in nineteen seventy-four, and we moved from New York. And it's, some of you may know, in New York City, Fifth Avenue is a pretty swanky address. So we showed up in downtown Scottsdale on Fifth Avenue. And nineteen seventy-four was a pretty swanky address with really fancy stores. And, and it was a destination shop for the region, and it was a great place for tourists to go. Los Arcos Mall was brand-new, and Fiesta Mall hadn't been built yet. So Scottsdale, Fifth Avenue, and downtown Scottsdale was the place to shop. So I went out in the world to seek my fortune, and twenty years later, I came back to Scottsdale as a bank president, managing the business bank and serving. And my office was in downtown Scottsdale. And I served a lot of the businesses and property owners in downtown Scottsdale. And in the early nineties, the Galleria was coming out of the ground, and Fashion Square was being built to connect to, to three department stores. And what we saw was the decline of downtown. And I was part of many studies and very many consultant reports and marketing plans. How do we, how do we reverse the trend of the declining sales in our downtown? And despite everybody's best efforts, the answer always came back to, we need more people to live and work downtown. In fact, in the early nineties, I had to do a marketing plan, as bankers do. And I had to look at census tract data for income levels and population and things like that. And in the census tract that included downtown Scottsdale, there were seven people who lived there. And I couldn't imagine where they lived. I'm thinking they must be living in the broom closets in the back rooms of, of some of these shops, because there were no residential, no residences in our downtown, right? So then Los Arcos Mall goes out of business, Fiesta Mall, you know, we've got lots of shopping alternatives all through the region, and so we're no longer a destination. And we see downtown start to struggle. So, as we saw in the history here, so then, we start looking at and recognizing that redevelopment costs more than building on bare desert, and that perhaps we need to allow some heightened density in order to have more people live and work downtown to support the local businesses. And we have been wildly successful. So when I think about twenty years ago, when I was a banker here in town, and where we are now, and I go down there on the weekend, and I see people pushing strollers and walking dogs and having breakfast on the patios, I'm very proud of the impact redevelopment has had on downtown. But I don't think we're done yet. If we go back to the Downtown Two Point O study, that study told us that even if we built everything that had been approved up until then, there were not enough people downtown to sustain our downtown, that we needed to continue to add more people to live and work. Now, I believe we need to do it with quality. I think we need to do it thoughtfully. I think Kimzie is a good example of a quality project. But I believe that we need to continue to provide opportunities for folks to request of the City Council things that will help us with economic development. I want to touch on some of the other things that the mayor talked about. He talked about transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, and tourism. And what we heard from staff was, in terms of transportation, we look at the impact on streets and whether or not streets need to be widened. In terms of infrastructure, yeah, they have to. We heard from staff, folks have to invest in that. And then after they've paid to expand the capacity, if it's needed, they become ratepayers and taxpayers, and they pay for the maintenance and replacement of the things that they've helped use. We talk about sustainability, you know, ironically, it's a better use of water when you have multifamily housing, because you don't have a yard and you don't have a pool. And the connection from one unit to another is much shorter than the connection from one home to another on acre sites. And so, in some respects, sustainability is better with more dense development. In fact, if we do this right, and we add additional height, we can create shade and more open space, and add more trees, and add more, more, more vegetation that would help reduce the heat island. Interesting, too, people talk about development threatens our tourism. So my office is downtown Scottsdale. I go out for lunch, I run into a couple, they're tourists, and they ask me for directions. And interestingly enough, we were walking, we wound up walking in the same direction. So I walked with them for a little bit, and they said, where is everybody? That they had come to downtown Scottsdale in the hope of sort of checking things out, and there was nobody there. And so I think we know tourists like to go where people are. And so I think that, I don't see that tourism is jeopardized by having a place with a lot going on and a lot of vibrancy. I will suggest, though, the thing we need to worry about is urban blight. I think about through the seventies and the eighties, we saw people go to the outskirts of a community, and it created this big black hole in the middle of our downtowns. And we wrung our hands to say, how, how is this going to happen? Are we just going to have one big park in the middle of where our downtown was, because everybody's escaped? Who would have imagined, then, that folks were coming back in the middle and saying, I want to live in the middle, I want to be in an urban setting, I want a walkable opportunity? And so I think the risk to us here is, if we put too many barriers and increase the cost of redevelopment too substantially, we are going to wind up with a very tired downtown with not enough people. And I think at the end of the day, the real risk is that is going to erode our sales tax revenue, and it's going to, so it's going to threaten our lower tax rate, and it's going to threaten our property values. One more thing on property values. The interesting thing to note is, I know people, we hear from folks about, oh, my God, you guys have approved too many apartments, and you're ruining South Scottsdale. Well, what I'd like to point out to folks is, I think we did something right, because the home values in South Scottsdale are appreciating faster than anywhere else in the region, certainly anywhere else in the city, and certainly anywhere else in the region. So we're doing something right in terms of redeveloping our community and having more people come here. So I don't see the risks that some of my colleagues see. I think the risk is if we, if we don't continue to promote redevelopment in our downtown, I think it'll be a sad day. It'll, it'll, it'll threaten our tax, our low tax rates, and it'll threaten our property values at the end of the day. So that's my perspective on downtown.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham, and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of comments that are somewhat random and disconnected. I'd like to thank the staff for all the work they've done with the maps and the illustrations that we've seen tonight. I think particularly the maps and showing the different downtown overlays and so forth and so on are really helpful in conceptualizing what's going on or what might be going on in downtown. And I'm still working through those, those, it's quite a lot to absorb. It's complicated, and it's difficult to sort out. But my thoughts, as I've been thinking this over, is that I know at one point we called this the downtown, and then we decided to call it Old Town. And I know here on the council, there's still confusion among us when you call something downtown, or old town, or whatever. And also, I, I think in map three of the Old Town Character Area Plan, we have ten different districts within the Old Town, which, with what is now called Old Town. So it, it can be very confusing. And I'm not sure we want to create a new name, or try to rebrand the old name, or what we should do about that. But I, I think it's a subject that's worth thinking about, because it can be confusing. Councilmember Millhaven referred to the Downtown Two Point O Plan. And I'm still wading my way through that. But I found there's a lot of good ideas in there. And I don't think very many of them have been implemented. Some of them have been, but I, I think most have not. Some of the things that talked about were the restrictions on events that have been put in place, such as there used to be a, a little market on the Marshall Way Bridge, which is now disallowed, I think, as I understand it, by the, the current events ordinance. And so I, I think that there, we should be looking at the events ordinance as part of revisions to the Old Care, Old Town Character Area Plan. Because I, I think a lot could be done with events, shutting down streets possibly for periods of time to have food festivals, outdoor restaurants, markets on different streets. I think things like that would be very good at bringing pedestrians back to the Old Town area. Another thing that Downtown Two Point O mentioned is that we needed to be more pedestrian-friendly with more shaded areas, more plantings, more flowers, et cetera. And I think that's something really important to think about. Because I think sometimes the streets in the Old Town area are just not as pedestrian-friendly as they ought to be. One thing that, that was shown tonight, we saw several slides from the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines. And I've read through those quite a few times. And I think they're very, very good suggestions about what should be going on. But I've been concerned that we don't always seem to be following those. Because the, the U-DAG guidelines show slender towers on top of sort of wider platforms. And there are specific pictures saying, we don't want long rectangular broad buildings. But we have several long rectangular broad buildings, which have been improved recently. And I've said before that I think those are inconsistent with the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines. And those long, broad walls of buildings, I think, contravene those guidelines. And so I, I would like to see much closer following of, of those guidelines. Finally, on, on the bonus provisions, I don't think the bonus provisions have worked as intended. One project said that it would use improved trash cans for the bonus provisions and plant bigger trees. And I, I think we ought to take better trash cans and better trees as a beginning. That, that shouldn't be a bonus. That's what we ought to expect in Scottsdale. So I don't think that the bonus system, as it has been currently applied for the most part, has properly reflected public benefits. And I, I think that some of the projects, I've seen that claim bonus provisions did not provide what I view as sufficient public benefits, such as open space or other public amenities. So if we were to continue with the bonus provisions, I would want to see much greater and better-defined public benefits. And I think I had one other thought, and now I've just lost it. But those were my comments. I'll probably be thinking about more as I look more at those maps. So thank you for providing those maps. It really helped in understanding our complicated system. And if there were some way to simplify our system, I would love to do that. It, it may be difficult, but, but if there is a way to do it, I'd like to try. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Durham. And next, we have Councilwoman Whitehead, then Councilwoman Littlefield, and then Kaputti. Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. Great presentation, and I think you guys are going to try to put that online so other people can see. I think that's really helpful. I think, I'll just leave, you know, Councilwoman Durham summed it up. The bonus heights did not work as advertised. And I think the mayor summed up, there's just, the transition from two thousand and nine to the two thousand and eighteen is just fraught with some unintended consequences and some oddball zoning that, for, for me, I can't figure out why it's there, the two-point-five, the random two-point-five. So lots of room for improvement here. This idea that. of room for improvement here. This idea that we are trying to put exclusionary zoning, I'm sorry, but I would ask for anybody who says that to go ahead and upzone their own neighborhood. Because this, you know, there is no end if we say that any zoning is okay. How tall are we going to go downtown? And developing a few square miles of our world-famous downtown to any height that the, that an association wants is not going to solve affordable housing. So I think there's a lot of room for improvement. I think, again, I refer to what Councilwoman Durham said, we, there are projects after project, I won't list those, but where I asked for open space and I was told that it was the idea, but it was not a requirement, we can improve there. If in fact, we're going, doing height for open space and we better get that open space and not have to grovel for it each time. I think that the loss of the easements, as we saw with a certain recent project, we had an area where there was pedestrian flow and as it was, that project was moving forward, we lost the alleys. We lost, and I hadn't even thought of the mayor's point, is that those alleys, not only is it a place where somebody can get off Scottsdale Road and cut through, it also serves as an important transportation option for trash trucks, for lord knows, plumbers. So less, less is more, that is the famous architectural term. I think downtown should be dense and I, should have density. I think that Kimsey was a great example of one of the few projects that they didn't max out on every bonus and use other tools to get rid of the transitions that we, such as infill incentive districts. So I think the Kimsey showed, we can do much better. And I think that this 2018 was a pretty dramatic jump with a lot of good ideas, but it could be improved upon. And I just want to point out that Scottsdale Fashion Square killed Fifth Avenue, not the heights. But the good news is Fashion Square is swanky and now Fifth Avenue is doing pretty good too, and so we can improve upon it. And so I'm looking forward to having a shot at making this better. That's what we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilwoman Littlefield and then Councilwoman Kaputi.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, from what I can see, all we're discussing tonight is to agendize a discussion on whether we should change the current character area plan to better reflect the heights as desired by our citizens and as they have told us in no uncertain terms that they want. I suggest to you that the plan we currently have in place does not reflect the values of our citizens. We are also, need to look at the long-term viability of what we're doing in downtown. I think we need to ensure that the suggested character area plan meets the four aspirational goals that the mayor recommended. I think those make a lot of sense, as he described them, transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, and tourism. One of the biggest problems I have with increased density and heights is we are losing the long-term viability because we're not putting in place the infrastructure, the underlaying parts that we need to make it viable. Our water supply, do we have any real plans on how we're going to keep supplying water to 150-foot buildings as we build them and build them and build them and our water supplies get cut and cut and cut? Brian Beastmeyer can only do so much, you know? He does a good job, but eventually, it's gonna come back and bite us. Also, sustainability, infrastructure, our alleys, why are we getting rid of these things that are part and parcel of how we can survive long-term in our downtown area? I'm interested in the long-term, not the short-term. And I think that that's something that we really need to put in place. We put these huge, big buildings in there, they're not going away anytime soon. They're gonna be there for a long, long time. And we need to make sure that we have supplied the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the electrical systems, all of those things that will be viable 20, 30 years from now. A lot of our underground infrastructure in Old Town is very old and possibly is already meeting maximum capacity. I don't know, but I don't think anybody has really taken a good, hard look at what that capacity is and at what point do we cross the line? It's already broken once, I know. I think that a plan that we should look at or that the staff should be able to bring back to us should be wrapped around the aspirational goals of transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, and tourism. Those are the things that we want in our downtown. Those are the things we need to have. If our sewer lines break, the tourists are not coming, I'll tell you. But the mayor listed the definitions of those things and they're good definitions. They're what we need to look at. Those are the four issues I see. I also see a fifth issue. And that is that our citizens are not happy with high, tall, dense buildings backed once, one against another as far as the eye can see. And that's the direction that we're going. I don't think that's what they want for us as a city. And I don't think that's what they want from us as a council. So those are the kinds of issues that I'm looking at. I think that we can work to make the whole downtown issue better. And I think we can work to make the town town work better, especially Old Town, not only for ourselves, but for our visitors and for our future, our posterity. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kaputi, thank you. And then Vice Mayor Janik.
It's always so fun listening to everyone's opinion up here because we're all so different and that's what makes this council awesome. I, I'm just sitting, listening to everyone and again, it's always so interesting hearing everyone else. I agree with certain ideas and I don't agree with others, but this point that has been made just now that, you know, the people don't want this. I mean, that's always what we seem to disagree with up here. We're all listening to different people. This community is made up of hundreds of thousands of people and we all have different opinions. From my point of view, I don't see people complaining about, you know, everything's too tall. I tend to agree more that we need to grow as a city. So first of all, I'm not quite sure why we're rushing this conversation. In that sense, I agree with counsel, with Vice Mayor Janik. Maybe this whole conversation would have been more appropriate after we put the general plan out and had it back and understood, you know, that we had an approved vision for the future that the voters actually gave us the go-ahead for. But having said that, here we are having this conversation. I actually like the current Old Town Character Area Plan. I think it's been 30 years in the making. We've had extensive community outreach and planning. It's been regularly updated. We've had, it's community-based, it's incredibly flexible. And remember that the council always has the last word. So whatever it says in the plan, it always comes to us and we have great flexibility for saying yes, no, maybe. And it was a city council unanimously adopted plan as well. So for some reason, we're now talking about removing flexibility and reversing our course and I don't quite understand that. Per the general plan, the downtown is one of three growth areas in the city. And Mayor, I understand that it's only one, but certainly not, I'm not suggesting that we cram everything into the one spot. But there are just a few square blocks in our downtown and they have to generate revenue for the rest of the city. I'm gonna say this for the thousandth time. Scottsdale is successful because we have high amenities and very strong property values and very low property taxes. And the reason that that formula works is because of this ability to build in a few small areas and generate the sales tax revenue. So the city is one of those areas that needs to provide for the rest of, the rest of Scottsdale. The reason we make our downtown a little bit more dense is so that we can preserve our neighborhoods in a lower intensity elsewhere. Heightened density in a downtown area makes sense. We have a very unique downtown where we're trying to keep the inside low, but that's, I mean, I can't think of another city, honestly, where we have nothing in the middle and then more intensity outwards. It's, it's a little bit backwards from what you usually see. So I'm hearing this call to go back to 1980-type zoning and I just feel very strongly that this is based on a lot of fear and misinformation. Infrastructure grows as the city grows. Otherwise, none of us would be here today, right? People would have said, "We don't have enough infrastructure to grow" and we would look like we did in 1980. But, but that's not the case. We have a downtown couplet. It was designed to provide more traffic lanes around. And it's still far under capacity. If anyone's seen the traffic engineering report, traffic volume report from 2018, it shows that we have a great deal of capacity still. We've done master plans for water, for sewage, for drainage, for traffic. And they were designed to accommodate a growing city. I don't think that we sat down and made plans that would only look two feet ahead. I've seen most of them and I'm quite sure we have a long-term planning department. We are looking ahead and we're making sure that our infrastructure grows as we do. Our city surveys, I want to remind people, show that most people actually do love our city and they think we're doing really well on our path. Most of the economic reports show we need more residents and commerce in our downtown and I agree with that. Reversing direction on the Old Town Character Area Plan would have the opposite effect. And I'm sure other cities are going to be very happy to take our business if we send it away. The mayor's talking about economic vitality. I don't think the plan to go backwards would bring economic vitality into our city. And I want to also remind us all that we just looked at a report talking about, our property values have gone up so high, we're actually able to adjust our property tax rate. That's awesome. Property values are going up in Scottsdale and we're clearly doing a great job with our current plan. I also want to remind everyone, we just spent months and months looking over our general plan. And we said, "We want a thriving, year-round, walkable downtown, live-work-play options. We want a pro-business environment. We want a variety of lifestyle choices and attainable housing." I'm just gonna have to ask rhetorically, were those just empty words? I mean, that was a lot of time we spent. I'd like to see plans that actually will allow us to put those values in place. And I am gonna use the word exclusionary zoning because I do think it applies. Exclusionary zoning does interfere with the free market. Without some degree of heightened density where appropriate, we are not going to have affordable housing. It's just dollars and cents. And I also want to remind everyone that we seem to keep pushing forward with all of these ideas about interfering with the market, interfering with private property rights. And I do think that we need to discuss the fact that we're opening ourselves up to lawsuits. Yes, it's not a zoning document per se, but this does seem to keep happening up here on the council. SB 1409 has been signed into law. The state is pursuing reform through legislation to preempt the city and they are absolutely targeting Scottsdale right now. I've heard this from a lot of people who lobby at the legislature. So the state is looking at our city, at city zoning in general, very aggressively for the first time in a long time. And they are punishing cities for restrictions that add to construction costs, particularly in housing, which is what we're suggesting happens if we decrease density in our city, especially in the, in the core of our city. And as was pointed out by one of the speakers, the president, even all the way up to the presidential administration, they're doing this. Federal funds are gonna be kept from cities that don't relax overly restrictive zoning that drives up our pricing. So we're inviting litigation. The state will step in, just like with short-term rentals and land use, and they're gonna limit what we can control. And I just don't think that's a good move for Scottsdale's future. I support that we're moving forward with our current Old Town Character Area Plan. And I certainly would never advocate to go backwards. So I know we're gonna end up having this conversation in August, which is fine, but I just want to put my own thoughts out there. A great job to staff. Those were excellent. Really nice to see in visuals. I think that when you're at street level, every building looks tall. So at some point, you do have to come back and give it a nice perspective. And I thought that's, did do a good job. And I have this, Architectural Standards and Guidelines in front of me, which has a map, and I just want to repeat, there's a lot of rhetoric being thrown around about, "Oh my gosh, we're gonna have 150-foot buildings everywhere and the city's gonna be tall and we can't support it." This is a very small area that we're dealing with. It's a few city square blocks where we've decided that a little bit of extra heightened density makes sense. We're not talking about 150-foot buildings all over Scottsdale. We're not talking about creating, you know, corridors and heat islands. And I think that it was even mentioned that you have to accumulate, what, 200,000 square feet to even ask for the higher heights? And that's, you're talking about a couple of parcels. This isn't the whole city. This is very targeted and appropriate where we have it laid out. I want to go forward. I like the plan. Of course, every plan can be made better and we should certainly look at the places where we can make it better. I like some of the suggestions made by Councilwoman Whitehead. I'm happy to discuss it. But in general, I think we've been on this path for 30 years. It's working. Why would we go backwards? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Janik.
Thank you. I'll make it short and sweet because it's getting late. What I wanted to say is, we spent a lot of time on the general plan. We had a 7-0 vote and we did a really good job. Now we have the opportunity to do with Character Area Plan for downtown Scottsdale. I believe that if we review it, we can make it stronger, we can make it better, we can make it more coherent or cohesive. My biggest problem is that I think we look at each development without looking at the whole picture. It's like taking one puzzle piece and trying to fit it in without looking at the whole picture that we're trying to accomplish. And I think when we do that, it's too easy to make errors in judgment as to, "Oh, we have enough water. Oh, our sewers can handle it, et cetera, our streets can handle it." And I think we need to do a better job looking at the whole picture as we put all those little puzzle pieces in place. So I think by reviewing the plan, that we can make it much better. And I think we can grab the extremes, bring them to the middle. And I think at the end of the day, we will all be very happy with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other council requesting to comment. I thank everyone for our input. And I would ask for a motion to adjourn our work-study, oh, wait, excuse me. I see someone's standing up there. Go ahead. Do you have a compilation of what we've done, Mr. Grant?
I appreciate it, Mayor Ottega, members of the council. Randy Grant, of course, Planning, Economic Development, Tourism Director. I would, this slide was, was left at the end of the presentation for a reason. And we recognize that we don't set policy, we implement policy. So when you give us directions, we want to bring you back something that gets you where you want to go. The issues related to the downtown character plan can state an intent, but if we don't get into the zoning issues, we're, we're gonna leave you very unsatisfied, I think. And if someone were to come in with a project that meets the zoning requirements but is in conflict with the general plan, we're gonna have a difficult time telling them they can't come forward to the council. And the last thing we want is to bring you something that you have expressly intended not to see. So I would just advise, as we move forward, that we be clear about what it is we want to achieve so that we can deliver it to you. If, if what we want to do in August is simply look at the character area plan, we can do that. We'll bring that back. And we can incorporate a lot of the comments that, that we've heard here this evening, great comments. If, if you want to limit height, we've got to get into the zoning ordinance to do that. So I just wanted to make that clear because I don't want to disappoint you in, in August with coming back with something that's not gonna get you where you want to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we still have two meetings left before we adjourn for summer. So we never know what will come up. Vice Mayor Janik.
I just wanted to make sure that we had consensus, that it was okay in August to proceed to open up the character area plan and, you know, make suggestions, review it. So how many of you object? All right. So it looks like we're two. So it looks like we're okay, five-two, that the majority is fine with proceeding.
So we're looking for the possibility of amendments to the Old Town Character Area Plan. Plan as a subject to be agendized in August. I believe that's the general direction that, that we've found in this, as a result of this discussion. Was there any other closing? Okay. So, accordingly, I would ask, I would move for adjournment. Anyone want a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you.